Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
States of America.
To the Republic.
For which stands one nation, one nation, under God. And universal.
With liberty and justice for all. Addition or deletion?
Yes, we have a handful this evening.
Okay.
And so there was an item brought to the board from the DRB, which had been sent to everybody's emails.
Uh huh.
There, we were, we received notice from Elizabeth that she is in need of moving along from her position with the town via the website and the e-blast, so that's something that can be discussed. There was a concern brought to the treasurer's office from a local resident regarding payment penalties for wastewater payments. And I received an email this afternoon regarding a concern about speeding on Route 30.
Kristin, what about the culvert concern? Or is that under road foreman?
Keith did, this is Kristin, Keith did send me a report that I have pulled up, so it might be addressed in there. Keith did mention to me that he sent me the report and he might not be able to attend the meeting tonight. So.
Okay, I just wondered.
I can.
No, we can take it up at the road part. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't forgotten.
Okay.
Okay.
And no deletions. And as everybody knows, a gentle reminder that we are recording our meeting again this evening, so just so everyone knows.
Okay. So at tonight's meeting, we have you, Kristin. We have Chuck, John, Ed, Bob, Frank Nelson, Harry Van Meter, and Tom Collard. Anybody else that I missed? Okay. Approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Everything looked to be in order from what I read.
I didn't see anything that concerned me.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as printed.
I'll second that.
Bob will second it. Any more discussion? All in favor? Chuck?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Any? Okay. Pre-requested? Anybody on the docket?
No pre-requested appearances by local citizens or visitors this evening.
Okay. Any announcements?
No, this is Kristin. No formal announcements. One thing to consider is that the current allowance for boards to meet virtually has been deemed appropriate throughout the entirety of the state of emergency order by our governor. So our next meeting is falling rate around the time when our current state of emergency could hypothetically be ending. So just something to consider as the board. We may need to just be on our toes thinking about how we'll work through the next meeting if the state of emergency is not extended. So something to keep in mind.
So then we would be required to have a meeting in a public forum?
Correct. Once the, once, my understanding is, once the state of emergency concludes, public, regular meetings will require a public location for folks to meet. So just something to keep our eyes on as we progress here.
Okay. About a zoning administrator's report?
This is Kristin. I have no formal report submitted to the board at this meeting.
Is there anything from the planning commission? Harry?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I thought, I spoke to Jonas the other day, and I thought he might be here on the call tonight. He said he was going to try to make it. But I will cover some of the things that we discussed at our meeting. So our next meeting is going to be June, at the end of June, June 22. It will again be a Zoom virtual conference. And I've asked Elizabeth to put a notice on our website and in the quality news that it will be a, it will continue to be a Zoom conference until further notice. The first item I wanted to discuss was the warning of the public meeting under the COVID-19 guidelines. Due to complications in posting during the current pandemic, which the commission was unaware of at the time of the meeting, any actions taken at our meeting will be open for review and reconfirmation at the June 22 meeting. We found that our meeting was not posted in a number of places. It was on the town hall, and I believe it was in the West Pollock Post Office. It was not in the Pollock Post Office. And Deb didn't get to send her email around because she was not in Thursday and Friday of the week before. So the chairman of the planning commission apologizes for any inconvenience to the Pollock community and the commissioners. We did discuss with Jonas zoning permit applications, which is in the process of revising. And Jonas, Jonas Rosenthal's draft was of revisions was discussed at great length with suggestions made by the commissioners and input given by Jonas. Jonas and the commissioners will continue to review the draft for further refinements with the goal to finalize revisions at the June 22 meeting. All commissioners agreed that the information and format is what the commissioners, commission was looking for in the improvement of information. Third item we discussed was the town's unified bylaws. The commissioners further discussed revisions to the conditional uses with input from Jonas. And emphasis was on descriptions of conditional uses as it exists in the current edition of the unified bylaws and enhancements of specific guidelines, which are intended to provide direction to the development review board in hearing requests for conditional use. The fourth item was election of officers. Chairman Harry Van Meter expressed the need to have annual elections in accordance with Vermont state guidelines at a specific meeting and recommended the regularly scheduled May meeting each year be the meeting where we have elections. This was due to appointments being made or confirmed by the select board at the end of March each year. Elections were held at this meeting, but will be confirmed at the June meeting can, due to the conditions that I stated above, that we weren't.
I wonder if his phone started ringing and it cut him out by accident. Oh.
Here, we're back.
Okay.
There you go.
Somebody was trying to reach, but I guess that I had to decline the call. Our last item, assistance to be hired. There has been no recommendation yet on hiring of an intern administrative assistant to the zoning administrator. Jonas, Jonas is continuing to talk with Julie, but I don't know of any agreements they've come to, any suggestions that Julie has had. And there's been no applications made yet for the position of planning commission administrative assistant/clerk. Sorry, everybody. The open position continues to be posted and advertised. And that's all from me. And at the conclusion of my report, I have to excuse myself to take care of some important family business. But if there are any questions or comments?
No, I think we're good. That's a good report. Thank you very much for making some time for us.
Okay, Kristin, I have it in PDF format I will send to you.
Thank you. And just one quick thing for me. I have been discussing with Jonas. He was going to work with me about getting together a job description for his potential assistant.
Oh, right, right.
So we haven't gotten there yet, but I will keep on the lookout for, for communication from him, too.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Good night, Harry.
Good night.
Good night, Harry.
Keith's report?
Yes, so this is Kristin and submitted by Keith, road foreman. Here is an update on the road crew projects. Warren Switch Road is prepped and ready for the shot rock. I am currently trying to coordinate with the quarries to get started on applying it. We have started on the preparations on Betsbridge Road for the same application. We are now able to get blacktop, so we will be patching the Route 153 crossing soon. I have spent some time locating manholes from the WPWW and have located most, and will be continuing to get them all located. Thanks, Keith.
Okay, the locating of the manholes is part of it, but the rest of it, we got to get them all accessible because we're finding that that last blockage was caused by a brick that got into the sewer line, which wouldn't normally block it. But during the COVID issue that's going on, a lot of people are flushing wipes and paper towels, stuff that's way too thick to be going down, down the sewers. And if there's anything like, anything that it can capture on, it builds a big plug, and that's what occurred up on Egg Street two Fridays ago and caused that plug. And one of the problems with the fact that it caused a plug is I had to get somebody from the road crew to come down with a backhoe to dig the blacktop off from several years ago. It got, they all got paved over. So now we're at a point where we have to have them all opened up so we can do a visual inspection and get any pieces of matter out of the manholes that may potentially cause a plug and just do an actual evaluation. So I believe everything from the monument all the way up through needs, needs to be dug open and have a manhole riser attached to it. And I've talked to Keith, and he said that that was, that was the beginning of the plan he was starting. It was to, you have to identify every one of the manholes, and then they have to determine the appropriate size riser to, to get. And I don't know if he, if he's gotten the dimensions or any prices yet on that. I haven't heard yet. So that's, that's an update on that, but that's something that needs to be happened sooner than later. That manhole, that incident cost us $3,000 to have them come down with a jet truck and, and get the lines and get, get it, get the manhole vacuum back out and a couple of chunks of brick and a whole bunch of paper towels and wipes in it. The only upside of it is that the fact that there was wipes in it, so it does fall under the COVID emergency funding act. So we should be able to get some repayment for that service from the COVID. And Julie is aware that that's part of that and has been taking a lot of notes on everything that was purchased extra due to the COVID crisis. The other part of that problem is that the fact that the people on the south corner of Euclid Street and 153, a house that had been abandoned for many years, they'd just been fixing it up, they got it painted, and they just recently moved in. And they're the ones that, that called in the problem because they had sewage in their basement. So after we determined that it, that was indeed a plug out at the, the manhole in front of the house, not, not in their line, then they, they tried with their big jetter truck to suck as much up out of their basement as possible. But now they've, they want the town to, they're asking if the town will reimburse them for cleaning of the basement. So I called Jill from VTOMs, and she explained to me that there was a very small section of their basement that's lower than the rest of the basement. And the unfortunate part for the homeowner is that the covers, the cleanout covers on their sewer line in their basement were not properly attached. So they were just, covers just sat on instead of physically fastened to the sewer pipe like they're supposed to be. So it, it just boiled right up out where if they were attached correctly, it would have just stayed in the line, and it wouldn't have made any mess in their bathroom. And the area that was contaminated was probably about a six-foot square area that she said, basically, there was some water that you would have to back up, chop back up and, you know, clean with, with Clorox or something like that. And that, that's basically all you'd have to do to clean the small area up that was contaminated. I didn't end up going into the basement and looking at that, that night. So I need to talk to these people. They called, I believe it was last, late last Friday or something. I got a message from Deb that they called and left a message at the, at the town hall wanting to talk to somebody about it. So I wanted to talk to you guys, but I think that it, it was the improper cleanouts in their basement that caused the issue, not, if, even though our sewer plugged up, it wouldn't have boiled out if the, if the cleanout covers were properly installed. So that's, that's what I'm thinking. I want to know what you guys feel on this.
My idea, this is Chuck. My idea on this is probably we are not liable. And I'm wondering if their homeowner's insurance policy would assist them in the cleaning if it becomes a major expense. But I can't believe if it's only six feet, it's going to be that expensive. But I don't think that we're liable on that issue.
Okay. That's my feeling also. Anybody else want to weigh in on this, or? So then is everybody okay with me calling them and telling them that, that we don't feel that the town is liable due to the fact that they're, they did not have the proper covers on their cleanout?
Yep. John, I'm okay with that.
Okay, John? Ed, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll call them, and I'll explain it to them. I'm very sorry that it occurred, but if their house was, if the sewer line was properly, or properly installed, it, it would not have been a problem. Bob?
I'm in agreement with you, Mike.
Okay.
Not exactly a welcome to, welcome to town, but unfortunately, we can't take responsibility for, for it.
Right, improper insulation in their house. That's, that's correct. So I'll go along with that. I'm still, I'm still in contact with Eileen Troy. She's representing her sister that owns a Profundi quarry up there. And there's, there's several little issues going on there. We put a new culvert across. In the same, yes?
Do we need to vote on that issue with that homeowner with the sewer issue?
I don't think so at this point. I think I'll, I'll just talk to them and tell them that. And then if, I think if it's a consensus of the board, that we all agree on that, that's good enough to start the conversation.
Okay, sorry I interrupted.
No, no, that's fine. That's why I feel, does anybody feel different?
I would, this is John. I would like to know, how many approximate, approximate number of manholes are we talking about? Are we talking 40, 50?
No, I don't, I don't think there's, there's anywhere. I think there's, it's down in the twenties maybe or something like that.
Okay.
And I don't think that they all need extensions either because I believe that the, from the monument south, I believe those risers were all installed prior to the paving job that we did a few years ago. So it's, it's from the monument north. And there may still be one or something over on Euclid Street there, too. And maybe on New Street, I think. So. Okay. And the other, like I said, the other thing I've, I've been working with is, is Eileen Troy for the Profundi quarry there. The water's coming across the road. Keith said that there was a beaver dam there, too. So that was contributing to it. But the reason they have so much water coming over on their yard is because they're pumping a quarry on the other side of the road, and it's coming down that way. Keith said part of it is coming through, through the slate of the road, not, not through the culvert. So he feels that he could put a little bit of dirt there to help seal that up so it was directed at the culvert. And we could do a, a small ditch because it's kind of going wild over the yard there. He feels that we could put a, a short ditch in that, that would contain it. But I'm, I'd like to meet with Keith and her up there and see if we can come to a, a reasonable solution to this. And I've stressed to her every time I talk to her that the extra water is the reason that we're seeing a whole, you're seeing a whole bunch of water in your yard, where in a normal year, you would get the water in the spring, and then, then it would all mellow out. So we can't control all of that, but we do have to have some kind of direction in, for the culvert, you know, in, in a, in a rain situation. So I don't, we can't end up putting a whole great big culvert all through the whole yard or anything like that. But if we need to do a little bit of ditching or something along the road to, to keep it directed and shot in the right direction, I think that's reasonable. But I want to talk to Frank, Keith and see how he feels. Okay, thank you, Kristin. Bob, do you have any comment on that?
No, I just, I don't want to take any more responsibility than, than we kind of need to in our right of way up there, Mike, just, just because down the road, we may, you know, get it thrown back at us that we took responsibility for, for diverting water or something like that up there.
Okay, I understand that. Keith said that, you know, it wouldn't be anything more than just a ditch along the edge of the road would be the only thing. Thank you.
Mike, this is Chuck.
Chuck.
I was on numerous road issues today.
Okay.
I had time on my way out of Granville, so I came over the Switch Road. I noticed that Leon's excavator is parked. I didn't see any of our crew around, but one thing I did notice that needs to be addressed, and I'm sure Bob and yourself, if you've been out there looking at this job where that beaver pond is, and, but when you head towards 153, we're going to put slate rubble on that whole section of highway. Is that correct?
As far as I know. And what beaver pond are you talking about? The one right by Profundy's there, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I saw that. But my, my issue is if we're going to put slate rubble from the New York line right through to 153, those trees need to be addressed before we start working the road, or the road is going to be extremely narrow when they get through putting the slate rubble on because you can't get it out there so the limbs, limbs come into the highway too far. You agree, Bob?
I do. Again, they'll have to take that into consideration, but they will have, they will have the equipment there along the road to take the limbs down as they go along. It'll definitely have to be a consideration.
I don't know that, I haven't talked to Keith exactly, but I don't know how far that they're going to go. If they're just going to go to those S-turns by what they call the Bush Quarry or where they put that culvert across just before Duquette's. I don't know if they're going to go pass out or not. I haven't been up there in a couple of weeks, so.
This is John. I drove by the other day, and it doesn't seem like anything's prepared for shot rock by Duquette's at all.
That's, that's also what I thought. They would stop like where they put that last culvert in just before, as you come through those S-turns.
Where the Duquette's culvert is?
Right. That looks like about what.
So just New York to that point of the highway, you're thinking?
That's, that's what it looked like. That's what they had prepared so far. I didn't, I didn't.
Must be he's had Gibby. He must have had Gibby do some blasting, or someone's been blasting, I see. Do you see the piles of slate rubble that are there where they've? I don't think that's done, been done with an excavator or a backhoe, has it?
I, I don't, I don't know if they, if they had a big enough machine, some of it could have broke up because if it hadn't, if it'd been exposed to weather for a while, you can break a few feet of it down, so. Hard to say how, how it is. But I'll, I'll talk to Keith and see what we got for a, a distance.
Okay.
What else did you spot, Chuck?
Well, my other spots probably going to end up being, when you bring up the lady who has an issue with the material that was put on her bank when the culvert was replaced.
Okay, acre?
Yep.
Right.
Yep. There's another situation. I don't think, it may not have been directly our issue. I really didn't think that it was ours. But the fact that culvert hasn't been blacktop, you know, is still feeding the fire a little bit. So I think that it's probably going to be an oncoming problem with this lady because of, I think we did that culvert back in October, November, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
And this is now June 2. Seems like a lot of time's gone by for this lady to bring this to our attention.
I, I, I see, I don't, I talked to Keith a little bit about it, but I didn't, I didn't have enough time to go and look at it, too, and, and then talk to him some more about it. and, and then talk to him some more about it. He says that he did move some plants for her. Can, you guys all got the letter, right?
Yes.
Yes, you guys all saw the letter that she wrote, so. I, I don't know. Somebody needs to go and talk to her and try and figure out exactly what she, what she has, what she wants out of it. I know that she wants out that bank. It sounded like she wanted more topsoil on the bank. But Keith said that, you know, we paved that road. We wanna, we have to redo the shoulders, which would change the, uh, the shape of that of, of the bank a little bit. And that, and that's basically the next stretch of road that, that he feels is, is ready for paving, so. But we need to do something now to, to make, make our job at least a reasonable job when, you know, when we're done. What do you think about it, Bob?
I agree. Um, I, I can take a look at it. I don't know what kind of headers, we really need on the culvert or how fancy we need to get down there. But, um, we need to put something in there that stabilizes that bank because that is pretty steep, down in there, so. We'll have to see what, what Keith has for ideas and what, what we can do and, you know, what, what we can't. We don't want to get too carried away, but we want to, want to have it be a, a permanent fix, so to speak.
It, it needs to be reasonable because it's all lawn around it. It's not like it's going into the woods.
Correct.
And that's the way it always was, so. If you could go down and take a look at it.
I can take a look at it.
Maybe talk to Keith a little bit about it and see, see if we can reach some middle ground there or something. I think that would be good.
Okay, I'll address that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Chuck?
Yeah, one more thing.
Cool.
Um, I noticed, uh, in Julie's warrants, I didn't see a bill from Hubbard yet. But I want the board to be aware that that's probably gonna be a three hundred to a four hundred dollar expense. The roll-off is back. And Keith had him put it behind the sand pile in an upright position. In other words, people can start dumping in it again. Uh, also, I know this past weekend was, uh, cleanup. And there's some cleanup bags where some things got left that didn't get put in the dumpster. Uh, so it looks like rubbish. So people have put some plastic toys and other things already. But not in the dumpster, just on the ground next to the international dump that's parked right there where the roll-off was. So, um, I don't know what he's gonna do, but something's gonna have to be done so that people just don't use us for a dump.
This is. I would suggest again that we get a camera there. Uh, we have talked about security in the past for the town offices. I think we need one up there now at the, uh, town garage. That would solve the problem.
They're, they're a very good option to have. I know, I know they're very useful for certain.
And they're pretty, they're, now they're pretty reasonable.
Yeah, I, I agree. Is that something you would, you would be willing to check into to see if you could find somebody to put a, a camera there? They just, they just going through and record for so many hours? Or a lot of them don't even come on, don't even come on till they see activity.
I think a lot of them are just motion, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know, I know just enough to be dangerous about that stuff. But yeah, I can, uh, check that out.
Okay, that, I mean, that would be certainly, certainly to get the ball rolling so we can have some kind of idea what it would, uh, you know, what we would be looking at for an expense. To get started for sure would be great.
Yeah. Okay.
Excellent. Kristen?
Go ahead, Ed.
Thank you. Now, would we want to expand that to include the town office? I know Deb was concerned at one point about a little security for the office there also.
My opinion is before, before we get, before we decide on what we want to do, if we, we can start getting some preliminary numbers and, and then see what it would be to have one in, in the town, in that, in that common area so that anybody that walked through that door was, was on camera and I, I think that would be a great idea.
Okay, all right, good. Perhaps I can touch base with, you know, either Julie and, uh, Deb and between all of us figure out, uh, something to do.
Get some ideas for sure.
Yep.
Okay. Is there anything else on highway that anybody wants to bring up right now or? No, well, we'll move right on to the, any report from the assessors, Kristen?
Yes, there is. Um, Karen submitted a report and here it goes. Uh, for June 2nd, 2020, the 2020 grand list, we have reconciled the grand list for 2020. We lodged the preliminary grand list with the clerk on Friday, May 29th. Karen was present in the office and Lisa signed the signature pages from her home. She emailed them to Karen who printed them out for her and Deb to sign as well. A PDF of the abstract was emailed to Elizabeth Gibson for inclusion on the Assessor webpage. Grievance is scheduled for Monday, June 22nd from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Warnings have been posted in both post offices, the town hall, library and Max Market. The grievance hearings will be held remotely in accordance with the state's regulations during the COVID-19 pandemic. The hearings will be held via Zoom meeting by invitation. Those who wish to grieve have been instructed to submit a written grievance which will be read during the hearing. If they wish to also be heard via phone or Zoom, they must let us know in advance so that we can schedule to include them in the meeting. Assessor office hours, Lisa will continue to work remotely from home. Karen will continue to be in the office on Mondays and Wednesdays and as necessary to keep current with the office work.
Okay, anybody have any questions with that? Okay, moving right along to the town clerk's memo.
All right. Got that. Um, to the Polit Select Board from Deb Hawkins regarding comments, concerns for your Select Board meeting, June 2nd, 2020. Management Director, I sent Bob Morleano's reports to Kristen. We have begun to take appointments and with a couple of exceptions, it has been going well. For Bob Jones, three fleet permits that need to be signed on the Select Board table at the town hall. We are in good shape with our PPE supplies with what we were able to procure from various sources and with what Bob Morleano was able to procure from United Way. I'm still waiting on the glass for my door. I have referred an aggressive dog complaint and noisy neighbor complaint to Dave Ricard. Sue is coming in on an as-needed basis. There are a lot of agenda items being discussed, voted on, approved in the legislature with regard to the upcoming elections. One being the mailing out of ballots for the general election. This has been met with support and opposition, but the Elections Division, and I have to agree, feels that we are going to have a huge uptick of early and absentee voting requests. And this will be put, and this will put a financial stress and a time constraint on individual offices to keep up with the numerous requests. People can still come into the polling place, but there are going to be many, many that will not feel comfortable coming due to the potential resurgence of the virus, which we all hope does not occur. In a normal general election year, we spend a substantial amount of our time spending, sending out early and absentee ballots and spend the entire election day running through them. This is an ongoing, developing series of changes. It is too late to do this for the primary election, but there is going to be a mailing of postcards inviting people to contact their local office to request a ballot. Have a wonderful evening. Stay home, stay safe, stay healthy. Respectfully submitted, Deb.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Does anybody have any questions or comment on Deb's report? Okay, Town Treasurer's memo.
So I have a memo from Julie, but I see Julie is here. Would you like me to read your memo, Julie?
I can do it. Okay. Uh, there are two warrants to be signed. Payroll for the week was ninety-seven oh nine oh eight. Total accounts payable was seventeen six fifty-four seventy-eight. General fund monies, twelve zero seven six point four four. Highway eleven four ten fifty-six and wastewater thirty-eight seventy-six eighty-six. Big chunk of that was from the, uh, issue on, what was it, maybe the 22nd? The Friday before Labor Day. Uh, almost twenty-nine hundred, I want to say. Regarding banking, I'm still getting quotes from some different check companies. I'm trying to save us some money on checks and I still have some on hand. So I've not submitted the paperwork to the bank to have only Kim and I as signers. I did talk to the bank about access to statements online and we have completed paperwork regarding that to set myself up as an admin. Then I can allow you all to be, uh, view only. So you'd be able to see all of the statements, including any checks that have been processed from anywhere you are where you can access it online.
Good.
Due to the COVID situation, there is a state level delay setting education rates. They're moving their timeframe from July 1st to August 1st. I have everything set up in my files to be, to be ready to rule once the grand list is finalized and we should be on time for that. But without the state education rates set, we really can't finalize tax rates. Uh, the first regularly scheduled Select Board meeting that occurs after August 1st is August 11th, which does not give me enough time to send tax bills out for a September 10th collection. So I'm just putting that on your radar. I think we should be ready to have a special meeting sometime after August 1st, as soon as we can, after August 1st, to, just to set tax rates so I can send bills out in time. Otherwise, we will have to delay collection.
Okay, that seems reasonable.
Okay, um, old business, just saying it every time. If there's any COVID-specific invoices, I need someone to let me know. And I do have all of the employee certificates for COVID training, except the highway guys. Keith has blank certificates to sign and I, I hope to get them tomorrow. And as far as Select Board members, I only have John's certificate on file. So if I could get everyone else's emailed to me, or I can mail you a paper copy and you can sign it.
Okay, would you mail me, do I need to go through a formal training?
It's not a formal training. There's a series of slides that you look at online. And as you progress through them, you get to the end and there's a slide that you fill out saying you've completed the training.
Okay. If you could mail me that link, that would be great. I, I have the, we went through all the Training Network and stuff too, but everybody has to have their own approved system, so.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for Julie?
I forgot to start my video.
You're back.
Sorry.
And so how do we go about getting the, the COVID money back?
I honestly don't know. I was gonna talk to Bob Morleano that he had specified that there was money available from the state. I haven't seen where I need to submit the invoices. But I will, I will follow up with Bob about that.
And Jill seemed to know about all the sewer-related COVID stuff, so she may have the more info on that, on how to, how to get the money back too.
Okay, I have a note to talk to Bob.
Okay. Is there anything else anybody has to ask Julie or?
It's not, this is Kristen, not to ask Julie, but don't forget, uh, there needs to be a motion for the warrants before we proceed further.
Good. Well, no better time than the present. Everybody have a chance to look the warrants over?
I did. Uh, I did have a, uh, question. Seems like I always bring this up when I see a Schindler bill. Just can't imagine that, uh, it costs that kind of money just to have them come down and inspect the thing. But, uh, otherwise, I approve the warrant, uh, even with Schindler included. But, uh, and I did receive everything, Julie. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Was that a motion, Chuck?
You're to sound that way.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we accept the warrants.
Who would like to second the motion?
I'll second that.
Ed will second it. Excellent. Any more discussion? All in favor? Chuck? Oh, wait. Julie?
I don't know much about Schindler, um, and what their prices are. Would you like me to make some telephone calls?
Uh, won't do you any good. We, uh, we called last year. Seems like this is an annual thing that we have to deal with, um.
Safety instruction.
They didn't cut any funds out last year, but if you, if you want to try, you're welcome to. But I think I'll make, keep the motion that we accept it as it is.
Okay.
Seems like they, they whack us travel out of Boston or something like that. It's, it's just ridiculous.
Well, it was, what was it, over a grand to change a fuse year, what, last year?
Yeah, so they whack us so much travel time.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's ridiculous money. But they pretty much, they're pretty much the only game in town, aren't they?
Pretty much, yeah. Not a lot of options, so. So all in favor of the warrants, Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Ananimos. Thank you. That'll be part of the new business story.
Without, you'll be hearing that going by my house in just a flash.
That airplane was low, wasn't it?
Okay, Emergency Management?
Yes, this is Kristen, uh, the Polit Emergency Management Director, Director Monthly Report for May 2020. COVID-19 updates continue to be posted daily to the Facebook page to keep residents informed. Participated in five conference calls this month with Vermont Emergency Management and other emergency entities. Procured hand sanitizer, surface disinfectant and masks for the town hall. Twenty cases of meals ready to eat were arranged through Vermont Emergency Management and were delivered to the Polit Community Food Church, Polit Community Church Food Pantry on May 27th. Submitted by Bob Morleano.
Excellent.
And without further ado, the Health Officer's Report uh, for May 2020 notified the Vermont Health Department Asbestos Lead Program Engineer that the homeowner has continued house demolition without asbestos inspection. Lead Program Engineer has engaged with an attorney for the state who will contact the homeowner's attorney.
And anything else?
That's all.
Anybody have any, anybody, any comments on Bob's report? Okay. Wastewater, I mean, we had that back up. They came down. Had to bring Dale in and to dig out the culvert, the manholes and that turned into a few hours. that turned into a few hours. I stopped after work for a couple hours, and they still had, had to, one of the, the steel, the cast iron manholes got broken when we were digging it out, so had to put a big piece of slate rock over the hole. But he's told me that he had, he had found one, and it was on order from Ferguson, and it was supposed to be in sometime in the middle of last week, I guess. And that's when we talked about locating all those other ones and such. And, other than that, everything seems to be going all right at the treatment plant. They're just, she's just antsy to see what, what we come up with for uh, what the feasibility study for the sledge collection comes back with, hoping it comes back soon with the, the study is complete, so. And other than that, uh, Kristen?
I'm not sure if this is when you'd like to discuss it, but Julie had sent that request from the resident in West Pollitt who had submitted his wastewater fees, but had to submit it late due to some issues with getting a bank check due to COVID. Um, did everybody see that email?
I did.
So, if I'm correct, I believe he is curious as to whether or not he will have to pay penalties. I'm not sure, maybe Julie can speak to it. I'm not sure if he's paid penalties or what, but it seems as though he's asking for some forgiveness there.
So he has not yet paid any penalties. He sent in his check for the amount that was due with a note, with a note that I scanned and emailed to you. Reason I sent it on was because there's been a new act regarding uh Board of Abatement policies for COVID, and they've basically authorized the Select Board to act without the Board of Abatement. So, just, just during COVID-nineteen, um, and so I didn't know if you guys wanted to take a stand on this. You can, from my understanding, decide to uh proceed with the original channels and follow the Board of Abatement and tell him that he needs to submit a request for that, and we can do it over Zoom, or you can make a decision on your own.
Julie, um, I got a copy of that uh letter that he sent, but I saw where he was contacting the bank. Have you gotten the payment as of this time, or not?
He submitted the payment for the principal amount that was due, but it came late. So the penalty and interest has been assessed already. So he is asking that the penalty and interest be waived on the portion that was due.
Uh, and we can act on this? We don't need the Board of Abatement?
That is correct. There has been an act that is signed into law, and it gives the Board the authority to act without the Board of Abatement process. It's a temporary authority.
We're, this is John. Were post offices open that he could have gotten a money order and sent it to you in lieu of waiting for his checks to come?
I have the same information that you have as far as what he sent us. He is, um, I can say that he is somebody that it appears lives regularly in the city, and he came up here and he had some issues with banking. That is what he said. I have no other information, and I have no way of getting any other information than what was in that letter. It, you could ask him any questions that you have if you ask him to either submit something in writing to you so that you can act with, within your new authority, or you can request him to go through the Board of Abatement. I don't believe you need to make a decision tonight. I think you should make a decision tonight about whether or not you want to ask him questions and then act on your new authority, or two, ask him to proceed through the Board of Abatement, or three, just make a decision. I think you have all of those within your wheelhouse tonight.
How much are the fees and penalties?
Honestly, I don't know, but I can tell you that he only owed one installment, which is a hundred and ninety-one dollars. It's the only thing he was late on, so there's an eight percent penalty and a one and a half percent interest per month. Only one month has been applied.
We're talking like twenty bucks here, something like that, right?
It's not a lot.
I think we can handle it. Uh, I guess I would uh make a motion that we would uh waive the interest and penalties uh on behalf of the, the COVID-nineteen uh crisis.
Okay, somebody want to second that motion?
Real, hold on, is that um just for this, in regards to this specific instance?
Yes, this issue.
Okay, and what, what was um, for the motion's sake, the gentleman's last name?
Omelo K R O M E L O W. I don't remember that.
K R O M E L O W, okay, got it.
I think, this is Ed. I'd like to make a comment before this is seconded and passed. I would hate to, I would hate to make precedent, or set precedent. I mean, he knew when they were due. It was his responsibility to get the payment in. Just saying.
Okay, I, I uh, I understand exactly what you're saying there, Ed. The only thing that I do know is that during this whole time, the bank, banking world is, has changed dramatically. And that, depending on, you know, some people aren't, aren't as on the ball as others. Um, I think it's just fortunate that we got his money. Does anybody have any other comment on this situation? Does anybody want to second Chuck's motion? Oh, Julie, you have a question or comment?
The one thing that I don't know is where we fall with Kim, because the eight percent penalty is her payment for the work that she does. So I don't know if we forgive that, that she doesn't get that money.
Okay.
That's all. It's still a small amount of money. It's still a very small amount of money. I just don't know where we fall legally with that.
Okay.
This is uh, this is Bob. I, I would like to comment on some of that. Um, I, I realize that it is a very small amount, but I'm, I'm with Ed on the kind of setting a precedent. Um, and it could come back around uh tenfold or, or whatever um on us. And as far as, I'm not one hundred percent positive, but as far as Kim's eight percent, I don't think we can do anything about that anyway. That's up to her, uh, because she's elected, and that's up to her to waive the penalty or not.
Okay. So then, if we don't hear a second, then will you want to withdraw your motion, Chuck?
I don't think you have to. If there's no second, there's no motion.
It just dies, okay. Um, does anybody, do we want to just say, no, we don't want to, or do we want to have, well, he could certainly, his next option is he can apply to the Board of Abatement for this.
If there's no mo- if there's no motion that is seconded tonight, I will reply to him that his option is to go through the Board of Abatement.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
This is Bob. I am.
Okay. All right, then, I guess, hearing no comment otherwise, then that's, that'll be our course of action. Kristen, do you have something you want to say, or?
Um, I'm just trying, doing my best to make sure I capture this correctly for the minute, so just pay attention. This will be within the wastewater treatment report section, so just when you're reviewing, pay attention to make sure you all feel comfortable with how I've recorded it. And if I'm correct, so since the motion wasn't seconded, it's washed, and I do not need to record it in the minutes. Is that correct?
Well, we need to say a motion was made, but not seconded.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And anything else under the wastewater? Guess not. Older unfinished business. That would probably be the, the Purham thing, Kristen, would you say?
Yeah, from the DRB.
Yes.
Yes, uh.
Can you read, can you read that?
Yep, just give me one quick sec. I'm just wrapping up my thoughts on this wastewater treatment thing. All right, thank you, um, so, find that email real quick. Okay, so. So from John Weiss in the DRB, this one is in the Select Board's purview. I informed Merrill I'd be forwarding this to you. So from Merrill Bent uh to the members of the DRB, the message reads, hi all. Jeff proposes that we all sign the attached so that we do not have to attend any hearings while they finish up the property transfer. I am fine with it with a couple of language tweaks, but the effect is that the environmental court case would be put on hold while they finish the transfer from Wade to Purham. Because the merger of these two properties would extinguish the right-of-way, the setback to the right-of-way will no longer be an issue. They will then submit a new application reflecting the as-built conditions to get a valid permit. If that works for the town, I will go ahead and give Jeff my edits and my permission to file it. And that is.
Does everybody understand how that all comes together?
This is Bob. I'm good with it, Mike.
Okay. Every, what about you, Chuck? Oh, John, go ahead.
I'm fine with it too.
Okay, Ed?
I'm, uh, this is Ed. I'm fine with it.
Okay, Chuck?
I'm good.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion on that, that we accept?
A settlement stipulation?
Sure.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Bob, Bob made the motion. Somebody want to second it?
I will second that.
Ed will second it? Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, Chuck, excuse me?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Get this roll call stuff down. Okay. Kristen, can you send a message to Merrill?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a note, hold on. Um, it seems like the only thing, it seems like somebody might, something might have to be signed. Um, in which case, Mike, I will, um, I will.
You can shoot it to me and I'll sign it.
I'll include you on my communications with Merrill, and she can advise what needs to be done.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is there any more older unfinished business?
Well, this is Chuck. Um, while I was in my travels today, I noticed an issue in front of Max Market. There was a truck waiting to access School Street, and vehicles were parked on both sides, one in the no parking zone, and I understood that there wasn't to be any parking in front of the store. That's the reason that he was doing the rearward parking access, but uh I guess we need to go back and see what we talked about um in regards to this issue.
Would that be something that the zoning administrator could look into and that's kind of what I'm thinking. He would be the one to review that whole permit process and outline it and tell us exactly what it had said, and then and then go from there on the course of action.
I, this is Kristen. I can ask, send an email to Jonas and ask him about that if you'd like.
That sounds good to me. What do you guys think? That that's the best place to review that permit and then see exactly how it's all spelled out and then go from there?
This is Ed.
Yes. Okay. All right, so then I guess that's what, we'll start, we'll start there. We'll talk with Jonas and see if he can ex- explain to us what exactly the, the permit calls. Okay, anything else, Chuck?
No.
You were busy today, Chuck.
Well, I just needed to uh get out. Being in this house and doing everything over the phones gotten to be old news. I'll be glad when I can finally get back at uh my full-time job.
Right. Okay. Is there any ol- other older unfinished business, Kristen?
Not that I have. I've got a couple items for new business, though.
Okay. Anybody else?
Uh, Mike, I'm not sure if it's necessary, but I don't know if you, we needed to, to vote to, for me to sign the checks and orders on behalf of the Select Board tomorrow.
Uh, we haven't, we authorized you, we authorized you already, and I think that's a blanket, right, Kristen?
I think it is until the COVID's over. I wasn't sure, and that's why I'm asking.
I, this is, this is Kristen. I do believe that is correct. The motion was for the duration of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, so I believe we are still covered. We'll have to re-cross that bridge, um, like I said, once, once we transition, maybe, depending on what the governor decides regarding the state of emergency declaration.
Okay. I'm good, Mike.
Okay, new business, Kristen?
Um, okay, so the first, this is Kristen, the first item, so did everybody receive the email from Elizabeth regarding her desires to step away from her position in the next few months?
Yes. Yes.
So, um, I wrote her back. She, in that message, she had mentioned that she believed it was something that could potentially be divvied up between two people. Um, ideally, one person would take that back over. She suggested in that message that she thought perhaps between Deb and I, we could do it. At this time, I personally do not feel that I have the ti- I'm back to working um my two other jobs in addition to this. So I personally do not believe I have time to take on more, but I did ask her to put together a job description just so that we could all be, have a thorough understanding. have a thorough understanding of what it is that she's been doing. Um, and that way we can kind of go from there. But I just wanted to make sure you were all aware of that. I'm also not sure um, what the pay looked like or anything like that. So I think we should gather all information, but that's something that the board will have to decide how we want to move forward with that.
Okay. Ed?
That might be one of those things that we might want to consider rolling in with one of the other part-time jobs or part-time positions we're looking for. Like with the zoning administration, just.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea at all. We could build a package.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking and make it a little more attractive for an individual.
That's a great idea.
Various hats, many different hats.
It, it also could be, um, something, I mean, a-again, it also could be, I, I asked if she wouldn't mind putting together a little overview of what the position is because it could be something that, you know, I could be, I could be prepared to pick up part of it, you know, so definitely could be something that we, like Ed, what you were saying, we could roll into something new, or maybe we could even see, once we know what it is, maybe there would be interest within the folks that we already have employed to take some things over, but, um, yeah, but that's a great idea, Ed. So, look out for that, for, um, I'll send that all to you guys once I hear more from her. But just wanted to be sure we made record of that.
Well, we're, we're sorry that she's, she'd taken care of that for quite a long time and she did a good job and we'd like to thank her for, for all her, her work and hard work and do that for many years.
Yeah. Um, and then, hold on.
The.
Um, then the other thing, yes. So we received to the Select Board email today, um, a message from Dietrich Brunkin and the message reads, "Good afternoon. I live south of the Village Center and before Sheldon Store. On a daily basis, I see people speeding into town or out of town, and I'm wondering why there is no enforcement of the speed limit. A few months ago, a white pickup with someone who I believe was a local constable was using a radar gun and had pulled over quite a few cars. My neighbors and I were very excited to see something finally being done about the situation. However, it seems to only have happened that one time. How about a radar speed sign like other towns use, like the one down the valley? My question is, why is there no enforcement of the speed limit? Thank you." Um, I believe that white pickup truck was a former constable or law enforcement individual in Fairhaven, I think. Um, and I let him know that I would bring it up tonight and discuss it. I do know that Route 30 is a state, is state territory, but.
He is our second constable. That white pickup.
Okay.
Also the chief of Fairhaven.
Yeah. Um. So. Not sure if they're ready to respond or whatnot.
We did put funding in the budget for those signs, right?
I, yes, and I, this is Ed. I thought we did, and I believe there was talk of possibly getting a grant toward funding the signs, but that, that was a while back. That was like a year ago.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if anybody ever pursued the grant.
There was, Jonas had, I'm sorry, this is Julie. Is it okay that I speak?
Please do.
I believe that Jonas had mentioned, uh, funding that he was aware of for the signs that we had gotten quotes for. I haven't seen anything from Jonas subsequent to that discussion, but maybe, uh, we could send him a follow-up email and just get him back on giving us something.
I can do that. This is Kristen. Um, the one thing I would say regarding grants, it seems like across the board, all grant funding is kind of on hold due to the pandemic, but it certainly cannot hurt, um, looking into it. And I wonder if, I forget, I know we've talked about this so many times during other meetings, but, um, what about getting those like temporary speed signs? Is that something that, I know that it has to be paid for, but I just, I know that, again, I'm sorry, I know we've talked about it, but is that a good consider?
All right. Julie? Hi.
Go ahead, go ahead Julie.
That was, uh, in the budget for next year. It's already in the budget to do it. And then Jonas had mentioned possible grants that we could pursue. And so if we don't get it, it just becomes a question of, do we want to be really, really cautious and, and come in under budget because of COVID? Or do we want to just the things that we've already accounted for?
That's right. That's, I don't think we want to buy them in July 1 whenever it starts, that's for sure. So. But I think it's a, we can tell them that we do have, we, we have plans on getting those signs, um, but also that's a state road and state police should be, he should be directing his, his calls to the state police for that.
I can, uh, this is Kristen. I can draft a response email just indicating what we've spoken about tonight that we're aware and that we have, we are working towards the opportunity to pursue radar-controlled speed signs, but until that happens, due to the fact that it is a state road, concerns can be directed to the state police regarding more active patrolling. If that's okay with them.
Sounds good. Everybody good with that? Okay.
Yes, this is Bob. Um, I, I don't know about Pollock Village, but I've definitely noticed a, uh, state police presence from, uh, like Butter Nut Bend toward, toward Granville anyway, uh, over the last month. Um, there's, there's a patrol car been, been spending time on 153 and stuff.
Okay, that's good. And is there any other new business, Kristen?
Um, let me just check. No, not that I have myself.
Okay, excellent.
There is.
Let's move right on. Go ahead.
Oh no, I was just getting ahead of myself. Sorry.
Time for public comment.
So it looks like Frank submitted a message stating that he has some things to bring up.
Hello?
Hi Frank.
Hi. Uh, quickly, uh, when you use the word consensus, especially when it's being recorded in this COVID situation, consensus is a powerful word that reflects a meeting of the minds that typically can only be arrived at by motion, second, discussion, vote, and roll call. Uh, that's something you have to watch out for because if you're arriving at a consensus apart from a separate meeting, you just may want to make a motion and stuff just to make it easy for any future downstream, uh, issues for anything regarding to a consensus. Because the only way you can agree is to agree to a vote in this COVID world. And the other thing in regards to the water coming from the quarry, it might not be, because I worked a lot in environmental issues for water in the statewide with an environmental organization. And, and they, they, if I remember correctly, there is a, uh, a quarry to discharge water, might need a permit and might need to manage the water that is discharged, uh, for, because potential, and this was written, the law I think, or the statutes were written, if I remember correctly, because somebody discharging could have, be discharging something that's environmentally offensive. But they may not have said, well, quarry water is non-environmentally offensive. So you may be able to pass a buck on that whole thing, including the cost and everything else to the state and the quarry owner without the town spending the money. Okay, uh, as far as any cameras go, if you picked up one of those motion detector cameras like Hunter's use that are game cameras, that would motion detected typically, as I said, might be all you need to do to record somebody coming and going. But in order, but what are you enforcing? Have you arrived at an ordinance where there's a no dumping ordinance in this area, uh, which you may want to vote on? Officially that there is a no dumping ordinance in effect around that area that you want to keep people from dumping and, and post it as such. That no dumping allowed violators will be prosecuted, et cetera. Uh, and the camera bolt. The, the other thing is, um, in re-, in reference to the asbestos issue and a tear down, uh, this, we ran into this in the insurance several times where homes had not been pre-inspected to show that they didn't have hazardous materials in the homes. And businesses, we had a business loss on Main Street at Granville where it sat there for a year or more because the state of New York said that they didn't, the owner did not have a certificate that you can get from an engineering firm who goes through the building and says, "This place is clear of asbestos or other hazardous materials." And since they didn't have it, then the state said, "Well, if you don't have the certificate and it wasn't pre-inspected, the only thing we can do is say that, conclude is that the building has hazardous materials." And that's why that stuff sat there for so long. It's because it had to be removed by a special hazardous waste company, then trucked by a company with permits to truck it to a certified location out near Buffalo, New York. And it costs an ungodly amount of money to do this. I'm not going to recite how much it costs. Struckingly high. So if the town wanted to be forward-thinking, you would have all the town buildings inspected by an engineer for asbestos, et cetera, and have those certificates in the file that they were clean before any loss might happen uh, to avoid any downstream costs that the state might come down on regarding asbestos potentially being in, in the, in the pile of, of, of burned building and, and the debris. Uh, and they don't cost that much to do. Uh, and once you have those, then you can produce them and the state will go, okay, typically. They couldn't say no, because New York State, even if you had a certificate, in this case, could have said, no, we're concluding over, over your engineering that there is potential for hazardous waste, which gets very expensive. And, uh, so that might need to be looked at, um, forward-thinking. Also, in regards to, um, a phrase that you might need legal advice, because I'm not giving you legal advice or insurance advice, but you can call Legal City of Towns on this, potentially. Because they would know this language. There's a language called apparent, um, a substantiable or apparent where if you, um, are acting as if you own something or control and it has to do with care, custody and control language, then you, then if a liability situation arises or anything else, you may be uh, on the case, on, as if you own something because you're managing it like you do own it. All right? In case of the dumpster, for example. I'm making this reference to other cases as well that might pop up. So the, um, so the Legal City is in towns. If you have a interest in the dumpster because there's been an apparent management of the dumpster, in other words, taking care, custody and control on the premises, which would lead, I think, I think the insurance people at, at the Legal City of Towns could be advised of this and, uh, schedule the dumpster as potentially property. Because in commercial world, as opposed to homeowners, you, with miscellaneous stuff, you generally have to schedule a lot more.
Your time allotment is running down.
Just a minute. Just, just a minute. Uh, also, lastly, is Eric's resignation from the Planning Commission was, is taking effect. Is that effect right now? He submitted a letter, remember that?
Yeah, I think so.
All I'm, I'm stipulating here in my comment, in my text is that I can fill in as I'm aware of what's been going on with the planning development so far. I'm up to date, except for the last meeting where I didn't get a warning uh, at all, uh, due to the mix-up that Harry didn't know that Deb was going to be out, et cetera, et cetera. So she didn't get, she didn't get post any warnings, she says. Uh, so technically, a meeting never happened. The minutes should never be approved for that meeting, et cetera. They should start up at the next meeting and just take up those items and re-approve probably to get back on board. But I don't know about the details on that either. But Eric, if there's a vacancy there, uh, the Select Board addresses the vacancies of the Planning Commission. And do I need to submit a letter? Or would this be something that you're going to advertise out broadly?
Submit a letter of intent. We're going to gather some, some possible candidates before we choose. Okay. All right. Thank you for your comments Frank. Tom, do you have anything?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to offer? Bob?
I'm all set.
All right. Ed?
Is it my turn?
I think so.
Motion to adjourn?
Indeed. Second? Somebody want to second that motion?
There should be seconds all over the place.
Come on, gentlemen.
John, you second that motion? Looks like John wants to. All right. All in favor Chuck? You in favor of adjourned? I think, I think that's a yes. John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
Thank you all for coming. Have a great night.